Um.
We're.
Most likely break the bank.
Bob?
On?
On.
Ready now?
Alrighty, we are going to convene a D Creek watershed board zoning appeals meeting for this evening. We've got what, one, two, three, six?
Six.
Six cases this evening. Uh, just about everything there is to have. Uh, our first case is going to be a variance. And, uh, variances are the toughest thing to get. They're supposed to be handed out only in the case of practical difficulty and hardship it lays with the land. And they cannot be self-created. So we, uh, will try to hear testimony about the facts and those are the rules we follow. We follow the laws in the book. Uh, if you don't like our decision, you can, uh, appeal it to the circuit court. Is that the right one? Anyway, for court, you got thirty days to do that, thirty working days. And you also might keep in mind, if you are approved for, uh, you can take, somebody else can appeal our decision in the other direction too. So anyway, we are your friends and neighbors. We serve it to the commissioner's pleasure. We are appointed by them. Uh, we all had taken training and got years of experience sitting here. Uh, so it's not our first rodeo, but we try to be friendly and low-key. We do, uh, a quasi judicial type of hearing. We swear in, uh, and take, take testimony under oath. And the opponent will present their case, then somebody in favor can present it. And then those opposed can talk about it. And then those, uh, the opponent will have a chance to rebut that since we've got one guy sitting here. I think we're gonna, uh, do that all at once with, with this case. And turn off your cell phones. And I guess, does that cover enough of it or do we need to go anything else?
I think that should do it.
Alright, well, Bruce will read into the record, the case and any correspondence.
Okay, uh, the first case this evening is an application, uh, by Mr. Michael Massey Antonio. Uh, Take a Break Development. Uh, he has applied for a variance to allow the construction of a residential addition porch to within, uh, it, it reads eleven feet, but we got a late site plan that, uh, is, uh, to get it to within fifteen feet of the rear property line. The property is located at two-one-five Lower Penpoint Road Drive, uh, tax map sixty-six, parcel one-thirty-four, grid twenty-three, and is zoned Lake Residential One. Uh, and Mr. Massey Antonio is here to present the case to you all.
Any correspondence?
We have, uh, one letter, um, from the rear yard neighbor, um, requesting that this variance be, um, denied, based on ongoing, um, issues of renters, um, well, of noise and, um, so forth on that back porch already. So, um, that's the only one we have.
Alrighty, uh, I'd like to swear you in now. Do you saw me swear affirm testimony you're about to give in this application for variance before D Creek? Watershed, board zoning appeals, the truth, the whole truth, so you swear affirm?
I do.
And where should he stand? At the microphone?
Yes, please.
We can see you on the video there, if I can find. The, the mic will pick you up from that distance. Uh, name and address for the record?
Michael Massey Antonio, eight-two-five McGinn Street, Pittsburgh, one-five-two-one-four. And the address of the residence here is two-one-five Lower Penpoint Drive, Oakland, Maryland.
Okay, as you saw, we were out there today to look at your project. Uh, tell us what you'd like us to do.
I apologize to the board, uh, because I was dumb from the get-go. I should have applied following the practices for receiving a permit. Um, after I spoke with, um, well, when the neighbors reported it, I spoke with Chad Fike, is that his name? And he began helping me to go through the process. He was the one who said to apply for a variance. So I did that. Um, I realized that the whole way down the line, this has been a mistake on my part. And I really have no defense for what the actions will be for the board. So whatever your decision is with regard to this, um, I am hoping to be very amiable towards it. And I really don't want to take up a lot of your time because I realize that this is primarily my fault. Anything that you have to say to me, I will happily accept.
Okay, uh, well, the first thing we notice is obviously this is built, uh, which does make it a self-created issue. Uh, it's not built to the standards that are required, which is not part of our variance. But in either case, it would most likely have to be brought up to those standards somehow, some way. One of your remedies is to take the roof off and use the deck if it meets the standards of building code. And that's, that's an option in your case. Uh, personally, and I think the board, I can kind of speak for them, we're not at all thrilled about this whole thing. It, it just, it's just wrong. The building's wrong. Uh, it wasn't done the right way. I don't think it's too much to ask that you remove the, at least the roof structure and work with the deck in the county and trying to make it comply.
Okay.
Um, boys on board, any comments, recommendations?
No, I think that's, it's fair to proceed that way.
And, um, would you have a recommendation as to who I should contact with regard to the process? Like where, who should I turn to, to?
You can get back to Chad Fike at our office and we'll arrange for, uh, a, a building permit for the deck itself. Um, the porch roof, again, would have to be removed regardless, um, so.
They can also refer you to engineers and architects in the local area that, you know, give you a list of names.
Actually, I have been in contact with several.
Okay.
Um, and we have used them in the past. The problem was that we, there was no way for me to get anyone last year. So I didn't have the opportunity to work with someone who was familiar with all of the codes and everything here.
Well, Chad, Chad's your first man to talk to. He's the head man and he's, his decision, gotta make him happy.
Okay.
All men.
No, sir, no.
Guys have covered it. You got it?
May I ask, will I receive, like, uh, something in writing that will?
We will vote on the case. It will be denied. Uh, and then you can proceed to work with them on something.
That was my question.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So we can do that right now? We need to wait till the end to do this, but when we're splitting everybody up like this, you deserve an answer. And you don't have to sit around and wait for it.
We are eight-oh-nine.
Eight-oh-nine, is it? No, no.
Take a booth.
Oh, uh, somebody want to make a motion? To die.
Motion to disapprove the request for variance.
Do we have a, uh, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. You better away.
I, so I will send you an email tomorrow, um, but you've heard the decision. So, um, I would suggest, say, Monday to start fresh with Chad on a, a building permit. All right? Thank you very much.
Checking it twice on my best sign, I'm probably wrong.
Can I blame it on COVID? I mean, everybody else is. Yeah.
Need to let the deputy know on the next case, or?
Yes. Uh, you can go ahead and go out the way you came in there, sir. And would, if you wouldn't mind to just let the deputy know that we can take him next day?
I would.
Thank you. I'm gonna thank you.
That's a, that's a, that's a blank one if you're.
Oh, well, we'll save it for next time.
Think of building farewell for staff meeting. He's not here.
Yeah, oh, he must have been wrapped up in that.
Oh, no, he called, he called me in burrific. Not only one manager, two managers, didn't it?
Oh, gee.
It's not that camper.
That makes him mad.
I was gonna tell him, you know, somebody told me a long time ago that management's really not all that bad, except for the fact you gotta deal with people.
One minor.
But other than that.
My, my, he said, business is nice if you don't have to deal with customers.
Minor fly in the ointment. That was not, not something that, you know, when I was in the military that I relished, you know? That is excise, you know, exercising military justice. But, um, it was already, it was always crystal clear, you know? No doubt in anybody's mind what was happening.
Yeah, sometimes you were. You can't quite do it that way though. When you got the officer in charge and he says, this is it, that's it.
Yeah, they'd stand in front of my desk and that was it, you know?
You're what, Air Force?
Mm-hmm.
That was Navy. And, uh, we're captain. We had a break a big with something, um, battle ship. It wasn't an enjoyable place at all.
It's fun riding there.
You have so much fun, anything up there. Wow.
You didn't know.
You got sea justice, you did not worry about much of anything else.
Yeah, it, it got tom-tom'd around real quick, you know? Takes stripes. Wasn't fun, wasn't fun. But when I, when I got to the, this base in Greece, it had a, a rash of drunken driving. And in Greece, the macadam on the road, first of all, it was almost always, you know? And the macadam had an excess amount of oil in it, so the oil would come to the surface. And then it would rain, it was like the ice capades.
So the, um, second, uh, hearing this evening is, uh, for Scott and Nancy Graves. Uh, the applications, uh, dated, uh, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, they have applied for a variance to allow the construction of a new single-family residence to within twenty feet of the rear and a deck to within twelve feet of the rear property lines. And this property is located at one-forty-seven Thornberry Road, tax map sixty-six, parcel eighty-seven, grid twelve, and is zoned Lake Residential One. And we have Samantha Brevell of Highland Engineering to present this case.
Good evening. I'm here now.
You've been through this before, but let me swear you in. Do you saw me swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this application for a variance for D Creek watershed board zoning appeals, the truth, the whole truth, so you swear affirm?
I do.
And name and address for the record and your representative?
Samantha Brevell, Highland Engineering, one-four-two-six Memorial Drive, Oakland, Maryland, two-one-five-five-zero. And I'm here representing Scott and Nancy Graves.
Alrighty. Uh, we were out there today, looked at this and, uh, pretty good idea what's going on, but go ahead and outline for us.
Alright. Um, as we started outlining, I'm here to request a variance pursuant to section one-fifty-seven point one-six-five E of the zoning ordinance to build home within twenty feet of the rear line and a deck within twelve feet of the rear line. Um, one-forty-seven Thornberry Road has acquired and a pertinent interest in the additional area from the state of Maryland, also known as the Biden parcel. The granting of this variance request would not be contract, contrary to public interest. The granting of this request would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of D Creek watershed zoning ordinance. The proposed improvements are consistent with the character of the neighborhood and do not adversely affect the adjacent property owners' use or enjoyment of their property, will not impair adequate light indoor air to adjacent properties, and will not impair views from adjacent property or otherwise be detrimental to public welfare. The proposed improvements are consistent with suspended uses in Lake One Residential zoning district and do not propose any use of non-protected. The proposed structure will not be erected closer than a hundred feet to the high water elevation of one-four-sixty-two. Um, I believe that you all should have copies of the proposed site plan. Um, and as you've probably noticed, um, there is a fairly large sewage disposal area that takes up, um, a good portion of this lot. Um, and I think you also have copy of the, um, subdivision plaque from when this lot was originally created.
Uh, they do not have that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Something, um, I do have a copy here that I am happy to, um, let you guys take a look at.
I do.
The result is what we got.
We're, I think, I'm good with this.
Okay. Um, so when this lot was originally being subdivided, um, as is shown on this original plaque, without the granting of a variance of some sort, um, the possible building envelope due to the subject area is very small and not particularly realistic to actually build a home on. Um, and so it was somewhat negotiated amongst the adjoining property owners um, at the time that this lot was originally subdivided and created, um, to help, um, to basically prepare for this exact situation that they all understood and agreed that a variance would be necessary to make building on this lot practical. Um, and it was also somewhat agreed upon with the twenty-foot distance that we were asking for. Um, and so it is in accordance with what was more or less planned for this lot when it was originally created. And don't think I have too much else for that. You have some questions for me?
I, I will add to that, that we have received, um, a letter from, uh, DNR with no objections to this request and, uh, no objection from, uh, Bill Weissberger, neighbor on, on the
Lot A.
Left side facing the property from the street.
Which is also Lot A on the subdivision plaque.
This, uh, I think she pretty well addressed even the, uh, one-fifty-seven, one-sixty-five.
Yes, sir.
Too, right?
Yeah, the hardship.
We also have approvals from the health department on the, um, sewage disposal filled and the, well, as well.
One family takes up the lot.
It didn't work for you.
Even with a variance, it's still a bit squishy.
Oh, squishy, I didn't get it.
Stay on the driveway.
Yeah.
Definitely. Yep, that, that has been one of the biggest reminders that we have been giving the contractor, you know, the subject area is marked out of, you know, very much big X, do not go here.
Have you seen this in the, uh, the short summers that we have? Have you seen this area?
Um.
I'm just wondering if that area that's called approved sewage disposal area is nice and green.
To be honest, I, I, I'm not positive. Um, I, I'm sure I have more or less been by during the summer, but I'm sure I was on my way to somewhere to meet someone and not really paid particular attention to this particular property.
It does create a lot of privacy though. I mean, I don't know that that's a heavily traveled road at all, but it does, because you got it up there, it creates, it creates privacy.
Yeah, it definitely does.
Any further questions?
No, I'm not, no.
Okay, um, anything else you want to add? We have no opposition in the room, so no, we find no letters. Uh,
What do you hear?
Fairly simple. Do I hear a motion, any motion, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second?
I'll second it, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's your ballots, gentlemen. When does this?
Can you start with me then?
We are finished with you.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Have a good night. Would you mind to ask Mr. McLaughlin to let the next up?
I will be sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
What's the irregular shape? Shallow, shallow, I guess.
I gave it shallow. Shallow. None of the special circumstances would be down the bottom of the statistic.
Squishy was on there.
Don't walk over there. Stay on the driveway.
You couldn't, you couldn't, whatever, we're on TV.
Bob, this property lakes that big thing you guys there, all this loss along that side of the lake, all the way back into the point, actually have, uh, ditch just run, run through there, that big field that you passed, run out. That's your subject case, this feels. That's what I like, that big field out there. That's what if you ever be sold out there than anything with, because we've had a couple lives go out there already.
That's Swackhammer.
Come on, this is a TV RU.
And this is, uh, I believe Lee Miller's property.
Ninety-nine.
This is very much so.
It's in, uh, an area where there's a lot of TV RU's.
Nineteen of them, looks like.
We get one a week, though. We have one a week.
Isn't it the greens?
Yeah, waterfront green.
Yeah.
Which ones will be next? Transit?
Swackhammer, yeah.
Yeah.
Disposition.
Also, we're gonna get rid of these things, if we don't act that new system.
Uh, yeah, we want to, um, make one of the two of the things on the agenda to talk about.
There's nineteen other TV RU's at waterfront green.
Yeah, but this thing is kind of hard to tell someone, no, everybody has one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just what that thing's known for down there.
No better place for them, nice big lots.
Away from everybody else.
Yep.
Ali.
Ali.
Alright. So our third case tonight is, uh, for Jeffrey and Dawn Swackhammer. Uh, application dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the Swackhammers have applied for a special exception permit for a single-family, eight-bedroom transient vacation rental unit. Uh, the property is located at one-fifty-six Lake Frontlands Drive, tax map fifty-nine, parcel six-eleven, lot thirty-seven, grid eight, and is zoned Lake Residential One. And we have Ms. Lee Miller to present this case for the Swackhammers.
Lee, do you saw me swear affirm the, the testimony you're about to give in this application for a special exception before D Creek watershed board of zoning appeals, the truth, the whole truth, so you swear affirm? And your name and address for the record?
Lee Miller, three-eight-zero, into Sanders Drive, Oakland, Maryland, one-four-two.
And you're representing the Swackhammer. Yeah. Give us the, the spiel.
Okay. Alright, so the property is currently under construction, so it's a new build. Um, so it's, you know, gonna have this sprinkler system and everything already put in with it. Um, the property will, um, the plans in the property will show that it has some shrubbery, um, going down the borders, um, both boundary boundaries, um, so that the runners can tell, you know, when they're crossing boundaries and not. Um, the property will not be used at all for weddings or events. Um, no plans for any, like, big outside speakers or lighting or anything at all like that. So just used for rental. Homeowner will use it occasionally for personal use. Um, let's see. Site plan you should have there should show that the, um, parking has been surveyed to show eight spaces to accommodate the eight bedrooms. You don't have it?
Sorry, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one.
Here it is. If you want to pass that down.
Doesn't matter. TV RU's, but I can force it.
Man, you got that best.
Eight spots. Matters.
And there's been waterfront green, so very well-established community there with lots of rentals already in place. So don't foresee there being any issues with neighbors and, um, you know, any impact on existing property values or anything of that such. That's all I got.
Questions, gentlemen?
It's pretty standard to me.
Yep.
Okay, there is no one else, uh, here to testify, so we will go ahead and make our determination. Do I hear a motion?
Uh, one quick question. Uh, Bruce, we didn't get any, uh, correspondence in this, right?
Uh, only approvals from health department and public utilities.
Got it.
No letters of objections or otherwise beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, ladies. Would you ask Mr. McLaughlin to bring the next, uh, question? Thank you. Uh, you got the right one?
Special exception, yeah.
Thank you.
Six, seven, four, eight, eight. Number four-eight-eight. Just as we still fill the top part out in there.
Hmm, and we do E, correct?
Yeah.
I can echo.
You get the next two. New car.
Very well. Place I haven't pleased, because I wasn't a pilot. Was that signals?
Cheat sheet right here?
Yep. So they never run one. But Dean Miller's a guy that was playing by plan. I figured out that, uh, we might at some point in time need to have a place for our land elephant. So right there, every, every base has a border road, it's a macadam. And then there was a big road coming down through the antenna field, the signal tunnel, antenna field. So right where the intersection was, was nice and solid, you know? I could, I could bring ambulance down from the hospital and walk off the other road.
Special exception, please.
So we planned all the way, and we, and we practiced, you know?
Am I on the wrong?
No.
Get a call and there was a young, young sailor on an oiler out in the bay, tried to commit suicide. Her pills, she needed a doc. We had Suda Bay on the other end of the island, but they only had horn, you know, because it's so small.
Had to have control, cruising.
Brought her in and held her, just set that sun with her right down there.
You know, Bob, you can land us anywhere once.
Alright, gentlemen.
This guy was in marine pilot, so he knew what to do.
Just keep him working.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hey, how you doing today?
We're doing pretty good. How are you?
So gentlemen, this fourth, uh, case is, uh, for Brenda McDonald. Application dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Ms. McDonald applies for a special exception permit to allow live outdoor entertainment at a tavern, uh, the Firewater Bar and Grill. The property is located at two-zero-one-two- The property is located at two zero one two eight Garrett Highway, Oakland, Maryland. The parcel can be found on Tax Map fifty-eight, parcel two seventy-four, and is zoned Town Center. And Mr. Doug Stork is here to present this case.
Please, Doug, I, uh, have a daughter who works for Brenda, and a son-in-law who works for Brenda, so Bruce is gonna chair this.
There you go.
Great, that's you.
Well, Doug, do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this application for a special exception before the Deep Creek Watershed Board of Zoning Appeals is the truth, the whole truth, and you so swear or affirm?
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stork, Thirteenth County Tribe, Virginia, Maryland, two one five four one.
Present away.
Okay. Um, we would like, Brenda's daughter would like to, uh, have me present on her behalf, um, asking for a special exception to have live entertainment at, uh, the new restaurant, Firewater. There are other areas, other restaurants in the area that also have this as well. So, uh, what she's looking at doing is having out enough entertainment, um, between the hours of one P M and, uh, ten P M. I'm not looking for anything or without any difference in the already existing. And, um, uh, it'll be actually, there's a, there's a little pavilion, um, if you're familiar with the restaurant, or I can show you, I don't know. Probably take another, uh, map I can show you, but there's a little outdoor, uh, bandstand, and there's a back patio, and first she's playing on having the, uh, band.
Back patio is right outside the restaurant, is it not?
Correct, on the lakeside.
Between, yeah, I was gonna say, I've been there, I know what you mean.
And she, and she understands that there are other venues on the property, so we're not looking at doing, going overboard with the entertainment, that's why I put this schedule, because we know we have people who are staying on property.
Are you, uh, looking for this seven days a week?
Um, in the summertime?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The bands will stay in the bandstand?
Um, they may be on the back patio as well, but, sorry, the bandstand will probably be the most, main spot.
If we were to approve the special exception, we'll, we will likely impose some, um, restrictions similar to what we have in other establishments nearby. Anything in particular that you're hu- want, looking for other than the standard?
The standard's fine, that's why I've kinda had the timing, a lot of them go to eleven o'clock or later, ten o'clock.
Mm-hmm, ten seems to be the.
Ten seems to be.
Seems to be the rule. Anybody else?
No, sir.
I thought they were fine if you stayed at the standard.
Yeah.
No harm, it's, uh, no issue.
Okay. Yeah, you wanna handle these, these are separate.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is the first one, I guess we'll.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
You wanna talk about some special, uh, conditions?
I've got paper you can read.
I got it.
That's easy enough, I just.
Yep.
Behind by them, because everybody else is behind the bar. There you go, sir.
So I say we give them noon to ten, he asked for one, but looks like similar ones have noon to ten, that seems to be okay. You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Go for it.
Um, some of them say, some of these other ones say about a lighting associated with the band should face inward. Is that something we wanna?
Lighting into speakers on most of them.
Face, is that something we wanna?
That's actually, uh, par for all properties, that all lighting should face inward, away from neighbors.
Okay.
Or downward.
Should we, I guess we should add the, uh, section about, uh, comar?
Mm-hmm.
Noise and vibration prohibitions.
Limitations, yes.
Yeah. So are you writing, or do we need to write them on our?
We'll, we'll go, we'll just go with what's on the.
A little bit of standard sheet there.
Okay. So you are approved. Okay, I believe Mr. Stork is gonna present our next one as well.
Oh, okay. So our fifth case tonight, also for Brenda McDonald, um, is for a variance. Uh, this application is dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Brenda McDonald has applied for variance to allow the enlargement of an on-premise directional sign. The property is located at twenty one twenty-eight Garrett Highway, Oakland, Maryland. The parcel can be found at fifty-eight, uh, I'm sorry, map fifty-eight, parcel two seventy-four, and is zoned Town Center. Uh, same property, uh, this is an, uh, within the property sign, uh, not visible from the highway or the, the lake, so it's, it's just basically to direct people who are looking for firewater to that property, uh, within the property. And Doug Stork again is.
All right, Mr. Stork, you remain sworn in.
All right.
Please proceed.
Presenting on behalf of Brenda's daughter. Um, I have a couple of handouts if you don't mind.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, what this showing is, is one shows the, what, the proper location of the sign, and there's some dimensions on the next sheet. Might also include a couple of maps, one is the landscape plan, that shows the general location of the sign, which is approximately right here on the map. Um, and then a blow-up of the location of firewater and the sign in reference to the, um, relationship of two nineteen across here. And I went through the zoning ordinance, looking for, uh, a sign for this particular thing. Um, it's a freestanding sign, uh, but really doesn't fall into the free, a freestanding sign zoning. The freestanding sign is typically within twenty feet of the road, so it doesn't fall into that category. Um, it's a, it's a directional sign, but it's larger than your typical directional sign. Um, and the reason being is because it needs to be seen from the top of the hill, pulling in for, for mayor firewater.
Yeah.
So that when people pull in, they're not seeing it from two nineteen, but as you pull in, you can look downhill and see it. So needs, the lettering in the sign, the size needs to be big enough to see from that distance. But also, when you're parking, you can have a directional that helps you get to the, the parking lot. She's finding now is people are parking above and walking down, so all the parking down below is kind of empty, but up, up above is full. So she's trying to direct traffic down to that. And where we placed it, we didn't want it to be obviously seen from the road directly, and it's hidden by some landscaping in the back of the signs to the lake, so it's, it's kind of protected. So since it kind of fell into a category, the hardship was the fact that you couldn't see it if we made it too small in, in, in its location. Um, so we tucked it in there, but, uh, because there's nothing specific in the zoning for this type of sign, it became a variant.
How much larger is it, Doug, than, than what the, uh, what the ordinance will allow, realizing it's not really covered by the ordinance?
The, uh, I think, you know, the article is, uh.
Four square feet.
Four square feet, correct? So, and we are twenty-two square.
But, but it's visible at twenty-two?
Correct.
Yeah, I can see where that's a problem. I actually, um, when we were out looking at stuff today, I stopped by there on my way back. You know, that was the, when I first went there, not knowing where firewater was, that, I, I, I pulled in, fortunately I could stop, pulled in, stopped, and you, you do have a tendency to go to the larger parking lot.
Larger parking lot.
Because that's for ACs, you know, but, yeah, so I understand.
So it kind of falls kind of in the cracks of, uh, of the, um, sign.
Kind of be some just low lighting, just illuminated, nothing bright, or nothing crazy.
It's not a lit sign, we're actually gonna light it from landscape lights, I'll light it. Um, we did, we did put some light, some smaller signs on the building, so once you're down there, you can get directional, but this was something to be able to see from a distance.
No questions?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you. Discussion? That's true, for me, I think you're kind of caught in a loophole there, I don't see why. You seem to have a directional sign on the property, I mean, it's not up on the road or anything. Do I hear a motion?
I'll, I'll approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved.
What is this, just irregular?
This is a variance.
Yeah.
You're doing fine down there, sir.
Well, I kinda like it. Bruce is doing a good job.
So it's not, uh.
I'm worried about my paycheck.
No, okay, they get up here.
Hey, Bruce.
I'm here, so, Ray, which one of these do we want?
What's the right, what's the right thing to say? Is it because it's irregular? Cause this is a weird one, I mean, it really is different.
I don't think any of that really.
Applies?
Applies, I would, uh, you could put something in the notes about, um, um, the size of the, uh, compound, maybe regu-, uh, makes this feasible.
Okay.
Something to get them to the right location within their own compound.
Another one of those part of that sign ordinance is gonna have to be.
It's a little, yeah, something missing, I think, um, there was verbiage, uh, not written in, but, uh, statements made, uh, about uh, on-premise signs that were within the confines of something big like this, or the Wisp, uh, or, you know, some of the bigger, uh, resort uh, compounds where they could have as much signage as they wanted, as long as it wasn't visible from the highways or the neighbors. Uh, no, no one wants to look at that, so, um, it, uh, those statements didn't make it to the paper, though, so, uh.
Apparently it's in the testimony, it's online, I've built it, and he's telling me he looked it up, and he's smiling his mouth.
Right, okay.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna obscure anything else, like builder signs or something like that.
So now, so now Brenda's gonna get complaints because the parking lot down below is gonna be filled.
Filled, right. Which is a good problem to have.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we have one more case, um, also being presented by Doug. Um, this sixth and final case is for a variance, uh, applied for by Melanie Pratt on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh, applied for variance to allow the construction of a residential addition screen porch to within point eight feet of the rear property line. The property is located at six one five Harvey's Peninsula Road, Tax Map fifty-nine, parcel two thirty-three, grid fifteen, and is zoned Lake Residential One. Um, again, Doug Stork is here to present that case, and I believe you have the site plan on all those packages.
Do you have it? All right, are the drawings as well there with the, it's the building, I have that as well. Probably that map will be there as well, I guess, and the plan for plans on the ground.
I'm having trouble figuring out where the old, stopped in the new beginning, on the drone.
I, I, it's one of those, I'll see what you want for the box.
I have the building plan, thank you.
I'm gonna present this on the, uh, behalf of Melanie Pratt. Um, this is one of the substandard lots, and it's, um, so. It is, it is on the table. The other, the other problem with this is there's three forty-foot setbacks on a substandard lot. And the neighboring lot, in the neighborhood even closer than.
Two steps.
Two steps, so she has, definitely has hardship, but it, on the backside of the lot, um, towards where the parking is, it's, it's her parking, but it's also common parking to all the other units, so she really couldn't go back. She couldn't go to the sides, the only, only option she had is to, um, go forward, and, uh, so that's what we did, to, to get a little more room. It's an old fishing cabin, um, they're looking at coming up here and living full-time, and she wanted, they needed more space for family. It didn't really get that much bigger, um, but, um, enough, enough to get a little better living room, dining room, kitchen area, and some better bedrooms. Um, and looking at this, the new addition to the home is not contrary to public interest. Um, the variance would be in harmony to the general purpose and the intent of the ordinance, would not be adverse to the neighbor, litter-otherwise detriment of public welfare. Um, the structure will not adversely affect the going properties owners, um, use and enjoyment of the property. This variance would not cater adequate, uh, light or air to these properties, and will not cater to the use of these properties. Um, the building with its increased size will be proportional to the size of both, compared to the structures in the general neighborhood. Questions?
They do have to buy them?
They do have to buy them.
This is kind of hard to discern on here, but, yeah, they do.
Yeah, I saw it.
And there's just a lot of items.
There's not a lot, right?
They gained a whole two hundred and forty-five square feet.
Yeah, they didn't gain much, but it, I mean, but it definitely helped with the house.
Oh, yes. So basically just a little room you bumped out the front.
Correct, and we, we pushed the deck, well, that's where, where the, to get them a little more depth, we pushed the deck right up to the front.
Sneaking a couple, you're sneaking a couple, four but ten projections on the air sign.
They're hard, you know, on the roadside, yeah, just try to get a little area for the bed to the.
Yeah, I get it. Any letters of, of proposition, or?
Nope, no letters from.
Consent, or anything like that?
Nothing.
Thanks, Doug.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Nope, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, no other people here, so we'll go ahead and go under deliberation, is, uh, do I hear a motion?
I'll do a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Shallow, narrow, and irregular.
All the above, all the above. You mean it?
We can, why don't we just add in steep, and we got all four.
Thank you, Doug, thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug. Kelly, Bob, Julie said I. Yeah, exactly, amen to that, we're ready.
Have a good evening, Doug.
You too.
See you, Doug.
See you, Doug.
This dog goes under me, yeah, right?
You go, sir.
All right, folks, I think that's, uh.
Yeah, we got some.
All right, you're not done yet.
Pardon me?
You're not done yet.
We got two other things here. Didn't, aren't we supposed to, uh?
Discuss Chad's.
Chad's request for the ten-foot, is everybody okay with the ten-foot? I know there's been tough ways and all.
Oh, these are.
I'm certainly fine with it, I think that's kind of what I recommend, but Bill mentioned, well, we need maybe standard with, with other setbacks like the, but they're all different in, in different, uh, locations, so.
I thought maybe that you should be with the town center, which is fifteen, to be consistent, but I don't really feel that strongly about it one way or the other, cause I mean, that's what we're kind of relying on anyway, right, this town center, um, setbacks?
Yeah.
If you guys think ten is better, it's.
Town, the town residential.
Town residential, sorry.
It was, well, town center's less, but anyway.
The, the, the non-conforming lots, in, in our ordinance, they're, they're allowing those lake residential lots on old grandfather's lots to have town residential setbacks, because they, their backside is basically what it was.
So we're going from zero, under the intent of the buy-down variance to ten feet now.
No, that's a different one, that's, that's for the buy-down portion. You got, I thought you were talking about town res-, those town residential, the non-conforming lots.
No, no, we're talking about the supporting Chad's letter to the commissioners about changing the buy-down lots to a set variance.
Okay, right.
Of ten feet.
And that was just the suggestion that he made, if you guys have a different number that you want to apply to that, that, that was what he was asking for your opinion.
Right, that's, that's, that's what we're, we're here to discuss. And, and I, I encourage ten feet, I thought, you know, zero was not gonna work, DNR doesn't like it, but the only reason to buy the buy-down is you can keep people off of it, you can build closer to it now, and if we start taking away that, you can argue that either way with what's being taken away, but it's a matter of how much. I kind of support the ten-foot, but I'll go with whatever you guys, ten, fifteen.
Any suggestions?
Yeah, about ten feet, two inches.
No, I think the, one of the other things that you're considering is that most homes are gonna have a deck or a porch of some sort on the back of that house, so if it's a porch, they're gonna have to apply for a variance for that, to be within that ten-foot sector, or whatever you deem is a good number, so.
Well, they, they can go to five, right?
Exactly, an, an open deck can go to five, now.
Like what everybody's saying, is that it doesn't completely outlaw your chance of getting a, a variance, but you gotta go through the regular standards to get that variance, and that that's harder to do.
Right, and, and the other thing was, is that most of those buy-down variances are getting approved to some extent, so it was to alleviate some of the pressures of having to hear fifty cases a year on the same thing that's basically.
Getting green light in anywhere.
Kind of getting a green light because they bought the buy-down. So we thought that a, a, a more considerate number of feet from that rear buy-down was a good idea to alleviate some of the pain.
Is there any other zone in the district that goes to ten feet?
Town center, what is that, twenty?
I think it goes way down there, depending on where you're at. Of course, it depends on like your grandpa or not, also. Of course, it's currently supposedly under E zero.
Didn't tell, in town center.
Anywhere, the only difference there is a fifty-foot or a hundred-foot rule in town center, a setback from the water.
Twenty feet is the lowest number for rear yards. In town center, two family or twin dwellings can go to fifteen in the rear. Townhouses can go to fifteen in the rear, and town residential in town center, so fifteen's the lowest number, and that was actually the number that I had suggested, but, you know, that.
Yeah, I kind of lobbied for it to be less because of the zero setback, the advantage of buying this thing.
Right.
Buying the buy-down, and, you know, we're now going from zero to ten supposedly, but it cleans things up and makes it somewhat standard. I don't know. What do you two think?
I think ten's a great.
Yeah, I, I would.
Yep.
I would say ten. You are, every.
Absolutely.
All right.
Ten?
So, we're good with this ten-foot rule.
Any other discussions on that sheet that he sent you all? There were a couple of things.
It's about five years late.
TBR use were one.
Are you getting rid of TBRs, we'll have to do that?
Yeah.
As a special exception to make those, just like the.
Like the one we heard tonight, isn't it?
One through five, but maybe putting some, a little bit stronger language, some of the things that you typically suggest as requirements in your additional requirements on an SE would become more standard things on all of them, as opposed to just six, seven, and eight.
I know you did a good job, and it's, it's long past due.
And then the, I think the last thing was the, what I was mentioning, which I thought were, you were starting with, those non-conforming locks in lake residential, I believe Rich Skipper set some kind of, put some language in the ordinance years ago that required those to get a variance, but it was to make that more of a standard, as opposed to getting a variance to get it.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, I don't know, is it the case something to remember when he was stretching it, was that?
Right, there's a lot of them along Marshall Road, closer to the Wisp, where the homes are closer together, we heard a case last year late.
Well, the sideline one, yeah, that's, that's what, I never did understand why your neighbor's house makes a difference to your property line in your house.
Well, it's in the ordinance that.
It is, no.
Something about to, the size, an objectionable bulk size that's blocking everyone out, basically, which does cut to the air and views and so forth, and which is outlined under variance approvals as well, so.
Yeah, I, I think that it's, the more we can eliminate coming here and making neighbors mad at each other, the better off we are. Make a clear cut and give you guys some discretion on what needs to be done.
Okay, any, anybody else?
I do, Bob, is it, is it okay with you if Bruce and I collaborate with Chad, who has offered to help, to put together, I guess I'd call it a draft letter, but it may not be as long as a letter, to go to the planning commission on the subject of the solar panels, consistent with our discussion when we were out there? And, and, and the idea would be, he and I will put it together, and then we'll get it back out to you and to Bill and to Steve, so that everybody gets a, gets a look at it, and then it'll be, I mean, you, you as the chairman, decision to sign off, or that I would appreciate you as the chairman signing off if you agree with it.
I think that is the whole board agreement.
That would, yeah, but, I think it.
Is that okay?
You would put that up for, put your verbiage together and then it would be voted upon on, at the next meeting?
Uh, well, actually, I, I just assumed that we, that's, that's thirty days away. I, I'd like to get this to the planning commission, my, my gut tells me sooner rather than later, because once this is in the hopper and it's been embraced, if that happens, then, you know, the county can point to the fact that something is in process. If we wait for thirty days, we're bumping right up against the other track, the other parallel track.
Well, bring, bring your thoughts to Chad.
Yes, absolutely, that's what I, Bruce and I will work it out.
He'll direct you to what the process needs to be.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a way we can approve something, try to directly approve it.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it, I, I may be wrong, but I don't see it as terribly complicated, I see that we suggest, we suggest, famous last words, yeah, that we suggest to the planning commission, some of the areas in which restrictions might be applied, such as setbacks, such as environmental, such as, such as, such as, I don't want to tell them how to suck eggs, because that's not my, my business, I don't know what my business is, but.
If you're ready, you might go to ten.
But, 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 but I think Chad will help us with some, some verbiage, and between Bruce and I, we can put it together, and, and then we'll, we'll get the board's, you know, the board's approval, and if Bob's okay with it, he sends it to, presumably it's Tony, right, chairman of the planning. I think that's the right process, that's what I gathered from listening to Mike. But I think, we'll go forward. I think Bill will be okay with that, he seemed to be on board, but he'll get, he'll get a look at the draft, so.
I'm gonna shut that down.
Anything else? I guess we're done then, right?
I'll let you adjourn that meeting?
Uh, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.